What makes you think I was not in?
I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, February 26, 2019, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:33 PM. Board members present are Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mrs. Vicky Morgan, and myself, Maris Elkhana. Board members absent is Mr. Kenny Fernandez. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that a notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapters 551. The invocation will be given by Mrs. Sullivan and the pledges by Mrs. Morgan.
Would you please join me by standing. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many, many blessings of this day. We thank thee for our school district, for each of our students, our leaders. We thank you for the many programs that we have that give enrichment to their lives. We pray that you would be with us as we go through with this meeting, help us make wise decisions that are best for everyone. We pray that you would be with the leaders of our country, give them wisdom in the things that they do. Bless those that protect our country, keep them safe. We ask that you would lead and guide and direct us and keep us ever in the center of our will. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Join me in the American pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Superintendent's evaluation, superintendent's contract, and related actions. Consideration of resolution agreement regarding Carlson v. Pasadena Independent School District Cause Number 2018-39187 in the 269th District Court, Harris County, Texas, and related actions, 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We now reconvene at 7:13. And that takes us to item number three, special recognition.
Well, board members and audience, tonight, we have a great night of celebrating students and, of course, one department, but honoring seven of our high school students tonight is exciting because they have worked very hard, competing across the state, to become a member of the prestigious 2018-2019 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Band, All-State Orchestra, and All-State Choir. So I'm going to turn it over to none other than Linda Fletcher, who will take it from here, our Director of Fine Arts.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, and I appreciate you allowing us and the school board, allowing us the opportunity to present these wonderful students to you and their teachers, and their administrators who support them every day. We have an outstanding group of students, and they know that arts education is not a frill, and our school district knows that it's not a frill. It's important to each of these students and to all of our students in our district. I forgot. I know it. Really? That's unusual. Sorry about that. I want to say that arts education is not a frill, and our district knows that. And our students that we recognize tonight have gone through many, many times of auditions to be able to reach Allstate. We have been one of the best communities for music education for 12 years in a row, and hopefully we'll hear in April again, I'm hoping, but for 12 years, we've been recognized as a district for best communities for music. And it is a time that our students in Pasadena are exposed to high-quality music education programs from kindergarten through high school. And TMEA and the Texas Coalition for the Quality of Arts Education released its findings and the study, revealing that Texas schools with higher levels of student participation in fine arts receive higher academic ratings, have better attendance rates, and also have lower dropout rates. Music, students don't just learn notes. I know that they sit through and learn lots and lots of things. They learn to be creative. They learn to problem-solve. They learn to persevere, to focus, to collaborate, and be accountable. That's what they have to need, and that's what they have to do for the 21st century. And at TMEA, they compare SAT scores. And the SAT average in the state was 1020, the national average was 1060. And of the 15 Allstate groups, the composite score for all 15 was 1308. So in 2019, the Texas Allstate Composite Score of 1308 is 248 points above the national average and 288 points above the Texas average. And before these seven students were selected to be a member of an Allstate group, they had to compete at the district, the region, and the area level. There were 71,000 students in the state of Texas who competed for an Allstate position. These students we recognize tonight represent the top 2.5% of those students who auditioned. That's a very small, small number. And the convention, the band students, again, had to audition one more time when they got there for a position in one of the Allstate bands or symphony orchestras. The students we recognize tonight have achieved the highest rank they can obtain at the high school level. I would like to present tonight the Pasadena ISD Allstate students, their parents, families, directors, and principals to you. Our first one, Mr. Brian Holm, Dobie High School Band. He's a trumpet and a senior. He performs at the Dobie High School Band Wind Ensemble and the Jazz Band. He serves as brass lieutenant for the Longhorn Marching Band, has received all-region honors the past three years, all-area honors the last two years, has been first chair trumpet in all-region jazz band the last two years. Brian hopes to continue his studies at the University of Texas at Austin, where he would like to study aeronautical engineering and astrophysics. These students could not get where they are without the wonderful teaching of these amazing directors and the guidance they give each one of them. I would like to ask the following people to stand. His directors, Mr. Kevin Erickson; his other directors, Mr. Clay McNeil and Brian Best are the other two, but Mr. Erickson's in the back. His principal, Mr. Franklin Moses, and I don't know if Mr. Clinton Hopper's here. I know Mr. Moses is in the back. And we know our students cannot do what they do every day and get to rehearsals since fifth or sixth grade without the support of parents. So with the family and friends of Brian, please stand so we can recognize you. Our next Allstater is Jonathan Villarreal, a senior and TMEA Allstate Choir member. He's a senior from Pasadena Memorial High School. He is involved in the Maverick Chamber Choir, First Edition Show Choir, and the tennis team, and the Environmental Health Council. After high school, he plans to attend UTSA to study pre-med while also being on the school tennis team. I would like to ask his director, Mr. Daniel Jones, to please stand, and I don't know if Ms. Bartimo is here, but I think Mr. Jones is in the back. And their principal, Mr. Jeremy Richardson, and Mr. David Bosley, the assistant principal, they're probably also standing somewhere in the back. Oh, they're over here on the side. His parents and family, Jonathan's family and friends, would you please stand and be recognized if you're here? Thank you for your help and assistance. Melissa Escobar at Memorial High School Orchestra. Melissa, she's a senior violist. Is incredibly honored to have performed in the Allstate Philharmonic Orchestra. She plans on pursuing music performance in college, and has already auditioned at Lamont Music School in Denver, and hopes to impress at the University of Houston, North Texas, and the Peabody School of Music. I would like to ask Mr. Noah Kletter, her orchestra director, in the back, please raise your hand. We appreciate all you do. And again, we've already recognized again Mr. Richardson and Mr. Bosley for attending. I appreciate that. Especially Melissa, if you have family or friends here, we would love to recognize them. Would you please stand, Melissa's family and friends? Okay. Thank you very much. Our next Allstater, Colton Dement. He is also from Memorial High School. He is in the band. He's the brass lieutenant and a junior in the Mighty Maverick Marching Band, and is current Allstater for 1819. He has been raised around music since he was born. Due to the coming from a musical family, he loves music and one day dreams of being a band director at Pasadena ISD. I didn't say that. That's not here, but I just sort of... I would love to have you, Colton. Either at high school or college, while at the same time, he wants to play gigs on the side. In preparation for this, he participates in his Maverick musicals at his school, the 225 Big Band, his father's rock funk jazz cover band on Fifth Avenue, and of course, the Wind Symphony at his school. And I would like to ask his band director, Mr. Jason Harvey, is he here? Oh, he must have got stuck in the rain. And of course, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Bosley, thank you again. And I appreciate it, Colton. I know your mom and dad are here. Any other family and friends, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your support. Ms. Jennifer Tofola is a senior at South Houston High School. She will be performing, she performed with the TMEA Allstate Women's Choir, and last year, Jennifer performed with the Allstate Mixed Choir. She is a two-year Allstate student. She is the president, and no, that's not easy. She's the president of choir and member of both the Varsity Choir and the Show Choir, Red Rhythm. She's involved in student council, and this year played a starring role of Ursula in South Houston's high school production of The Little Mermaid, which was amazing. Jennifer plans on pursuing a musical degree upon graduation. I would like to ask the following people to stand. I know Ms. Varvoudis and Ms. Howard are both here, her choir directors. Without you, they, she could not be. Thank you. Her principal is Andrew Weaking, and assistant principal, Ms. Melissa Istre. Ah, Melissa. Thank you. Jennifer, were any of your family members able to make it? Wonderful, mom and dad. Thank you so much. From South Houston High School, also, we have Jonathan Escobar. He is a senior at South Houston High School. And this is also his second year as a member of a TMEA Allstate organization. Mixed Choir Jonathan is a leader in the South Houston Varsity Choir, a member of the Red Rhythm Show Choir, and a starring role as Sebastian in South Houston musical, The Little Mermaid. He plans to pursue a music degree upon graduation. I would like to ask again, we have Ms. Varvoudis and Ms. Howard. We want to thank you for your help with them. And Ms. Istre, thank you for being here. Jonathan, do we have any family members? All right. Jonathan, thank you again. Last but not least, we have Mr. Charles Dial. Mr. Charles Dial is a senior at Sam Rayburn High School, and this is his third year as He has been in the Sam Rayburn Wind Ensemble and the Symphony Orchestra since his freshman year. He has made Allstate three times since his sophomore year, and is a member of the National Honor Society, president of the Math Honor Society, and soon to be Eagle Scout, and is ranked fifth in the class of 2019. Charles has been accepted and will be attending Rice University in the upcoming fall as a member of 2023. And he plans to major in astrophysics to pursue a career in the field. I would like to ask his band director, Mr. Jeff Emery, to please stand and thank him for all he's done. His principal, Ms. Vanessa Reyes, is also in the back with him. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Is Mr. Cox here? No. Okay. And Charles, family and friends, I would like to ask you to please stand, and thank you for all your support through these years. These young people have given a lot of time and effort, not for themselves and for the music that they produce. And without our district and without the support of our board and our superintendent and all they do, and their love for our students, and for, they know that students, it takes fine arts, athletics, and their core classes to make the whole child. And that is not true for every district that I know, and I'm just thrilled. I've been in here 44 years with the district, and I love this district, and because of that. They support everything we do, and they do everything what's best for the student, and I truly appreciate all of that. And students in these high-quality programs we produce, they go on, and hopefully they come back to teach. But I want to thank you, parents, for all that you do and all that you've given, because a lot of these are seniors, and you'll be sending them off to college. But thank you for giving them to us, thank you for sharing them with us, and for making us better for having them. I get to stay up here?
Yes, Ms. Fletcher, don't run off. Go ahead and tell us about the amazing visual arts students.
Ms. Ragosa, who is our coordinator of fine arts, is stuck in Oregon in the snowstorm, so I get to do this. This is from our Fort Worth Rodeo Art Contest, and I want to thank you again for allowing us to do this presentation. The Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo annually sponsors the Star Telegram Stock Show Art Contest. Pasadena art students dominated the competition and swept away 50% of the awards. As I call your name, we have one student who was able to make it, this is such a lovely evening, one student who was able to make it, but I'm going to call all the names quickly. But the grand champion at the Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo was Brandy Viegas. Is it Viegas? Yay. She's from Rayburn High School. She received a $5,000 scholarship at Fort Worth. And the gentlemen and ladies who are not here that we still want to recognize was Mr. Joseph Rogers from Rayburn, a $4,000 scholarship. He was in first place. In second place, Marco Sosa from Rayburn, $3,150 scholarship. This was for the 2D Grand Champion 2D. This is high school 3D division. First place was Alfred Garza from Rayburn, $2,000 scholarship. And third place was Matthew Salavega. Did I do it right? Matthew Salavega, he's a $1,000 scholarship. So in all, the students earned a total of $15,150 in scholarships from Fort Worth, Was Brandy's teacher here tonight? If she is, could you please wave or be... There you are, there you are. Would the parents of Brandy, if you are here, would you please stand and be recognized for all of your support? Thank you. Thank you, Brandy. I also want to introduce Mr. Victor Ragosa, who will present the trophy and a check. So the district lead, Mr. Ragosa is our district lead art teacher, and he's going to have a presentation, but I'm going to do the presentation. He's just going to give it. He doesn't want to talk. So at this time, with the art teacher from Tom Center Media, Ms. Janet Reynolds, please Ms. Reynolds submitted art into the class category with eight pieces of art, and her class won the award for the second year in a row. So please accept...
Thank you so much.
Ms. Reynolds, please accept your trophy and a $1,000 check for your school art program from the Fort Worth Rodeo Art Contest. Could I have Ms. Tanis Griffin come up, be in the picture? I think Ms. Griffin, the principal, needs to come up and also be in the picture.
Oh, no.
What did you... Oh, my. I won't ask.
Don't want to talk about that.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, that was exciting. We're going to switch gears just a little bit, and I will introduce Amber McNish, our PE, health, and wellness coordinator, and she'll come up and introduce some amazing winners.
All right. Good evening. So this, tonight, I am celebrating our Gridiron Champions. If you've been part of Pasadena ISD for any length of time, I'm sure that you remember our punt, pass, and kick championships. They've been doing punt, pass, and kick competitions for the past 15, 16 years, and then in 2017, the competition ended. So we did it one year without our kids able to advance, but we were very excited that the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation took over punt, pass, and kick and changed it to the gridiron competition. The gridiron competition is the same as punt, pass, and kick, still includes a punt, a pass, and a kick, but adds an additional 40-yard dash. So our students were able to not only win from their campuses, they won from our district, and then they went and competed at the state level. And the folks that we're going to recognize tonight are our overall state champions for gridiron. So we're super excited about this. But I wanted to introduce Mr. Bob Ellis. We partner with the City of Pasadena Parks and Rec Athletics Division on this competition. And so he was part of the TAF competition. I was unable to be there because I was at a conference, but he gave me lots of updates of how our kids represented. We had the most students entered in the competition and the most winners, so we're super excited about that. And you'll notice, as they're walking by, their hands are full. So I'm going to bring this to the end of the line so they can shake their hands.
Thank you, Amber. You're going to hear a lot of clanking of hardware when these young folks come by, because as you said, there are four events, not three, and they all did very, very well. Let me introduce to you, from Richie, oh, hold on, if you're principal, PE teacher, or parent, when I announce your child, would you please stand and recognize him? And their necks may get a little tired because there's a lot of silver and bronze and gold around their necks.
You've got lots of medals. That's fantastic.
No, you can't have one, Fred.
I never got one when I was a kid.
From Williams, this is the eight, nine-year-old girls from Williams, Ariana Cantu. And in the 10 and 11-year-old girl division, from Sullivan, Mia Garza. And I remiss, because I didn't say what they did, Ariana was third in her division, Lyanna was first, and Mia was second. In the girls 12 to 13, finishing third overall, Jenna Rojas from Lomax. Second place overall, Victoria Parrott. And then first overall, Sierra Ramirez from Schneider. And now, from the gentleman's side, third overall in the eight, nine-year-old, Angel Gabriel Lopez from Golden Acres. Second overall, eight, nine-year-old, Branson Britton from Stutchberry. And first overall, Oscar Hernandez from Bush. And in the 10 and 11-year-old, first overall, Kevin Martinez from Morris. And in the 12, the 13-year-old age group, first overall, Jeremiah King, again, from And those of you who are old enough, which most of us in here, there was a young man named Mike Kirkland did pretty well in this in 1967. He was the national champion in the 13-year-old age group, Pasadena High School graduate. So with that being said, thank you, and take a picture right quick.
Hey, Bob, could you take these kids and introduce them to the football coaches, please, in the way...
I think they're...
Both boys and girls?
I think they're being watched.
Okay.
Okay. So here is this. Do you want to get this down, and then I'll read this?
That's awesome. We have another award that we want to recognize tonight, and this is for our child nutrition. I'm going to ask Mary Herrman, if she'll come up here, she'll love this. She'll get to stand here while I brag a little bit about them. So Mary, if you'll come forward, bring your team, absolutely. Since 2013, the Texas Department of Agriculture has recognized schools for their efforts to bring local foods and agricultural education to their students. Almost 20% of Texas school districts participated in the Farm Fresh Challenge this year, and this is the fifth year that Pasadena ISD has been awarded the TDA Local Products Challenge Award, and we're one of the few districts that took the challenge to the highest level and achieved the best-of-the-bunch recognition statewide. So the Child Nutrition Department will be recognized by TDA in Austin in June. So let's celebrate our outstanding Child Nutrition Department, and if you'll come forward and get your award.
Awesome as always. Thank you for all you do. It's pretty cool.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you.
I know they'll get a quick pic at some point out in the hallway, okay? All right, well, that's all for our special recognition. We have lots of excitement across the district, all year long, every day, but we wanted to recognize those individuals we did here tonight, so thank you.
That brings us to item number four, public comments, and there are none that we know of this evening. Section three, consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section four, Personnel Section, item number one, consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve addenda page A.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like to introduce this individual. It's David Zapian. David, are you here? David has just been named High School Campus Coordinator, Head Football Coach at Pasadena High School, and we're so excited for you. and we're so excited for you. David, will you introduce your family to us?
I'd like to... First, I'd like to thank the board and the committee and Superintendent Dr. Powell and our Principal, Joseph Adra, and our Athletic Director, Mr. Hasso, for this great honor. From being from Pasadena, from graduating from Sam Rayburn, this is a big honor. A lot of my... A lot of my family has graduated from Pasadena ISD. So, as I recognize them, I'll say where they graduated, or try to say where they graduated from, so if I remember. But first, I want to introduce my wife. She works at Nellis Sullivan. Her name is Selena Zapian, so she's been there as I moved around in different places. So, it's been great. My parents, Blaine Zapian and Louis Zapian. My mom graduated from Sam Rayburn High School. So, my aunt and uncle, Gloria and Ray Herrera, she also graduated from Sam Rayburn High School. My brother and his... My sister-in-law, April Lewis, he also graduated from Sam Rayburn. A lot of Sam Rayburn. My uncle, my Uncle Ernest, he also, Sam Rayburn. There you go. My cousin, he got South Houston, so that's a little different. And then my... Kind of like my mentor through all the stuff that I've been through, and he's kind of pushed me along, saying I could get this far, is Eric Luster. And so, one more, my little niece, my little niece, Leah. And so, I'd just like to thank everybody for this great opportunity, so.
We're looking forward to great things, and we know we've already heard how much you love kids, and that's top on the list.
Coach, can you get those family members some green? Can you teach them the school song?
I'll do my best.
Okay, and nobody, but nobody says, "Burn Baldi." You got that, Savager? You work with it.
They already know the line, "We'll always be proud Texans."
But just remember, you're always in the same family, so that's what matters. You're in the same family.
That's right.
Congratulations. Item number two, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Amendment to Superintendent's Contract and Related Actions.
I move that we approve the Amendment to the Superintendent's Contract, extending the contract date one year.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Resolution Agreement Regarding Carlson v. Pasadena Independent School District Clause Number 2018-39187 in the 269th District Court, Harris County, Texas, and Related Actions.
So, move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Authorization to Utilize a Compensation Freeze When PISD Discovers That an Employee Is Being Overcompensated Pursuant to a District's Approval Salary Schedule and/or Applicable Compensation Calculations.
So, move.
Second. Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any discussion?
And board members on this, anytime this would happen, we would bring this back to the board. So, I just want you to know that would be something you would be knowledgeable of if it were to happen. We're going to do our best for it not to be an issue.
Good.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Certified Personnel Only is for Information Purposes. Item six, Support Personnel for Information Purposes Only. Section five, Educational Section. Item number one, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Pasadena ISD Extended Year Programs for Summer 2019.
So, move.
Second. Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Normally, after personnel, I say, for those of you that came here to support anyone that would like to leave at this time, you're more than welcome to do so, and I did not. So, you're more than welcome to leave at this time if you'd like to. Item number two, Public Hearing of Annual Performance Report, including the 2017-18 Texas Academic Performance Report, TAAPR, and we have a public hearing and presentation.
Yes, and Donna Summers will come forward and do her magic.
And it is magic.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, we're here to fulfill a Texas Education Code requirement that we have a public hearing for our annual report. Most of the information in this report, as always, has already been presented, so we will not go over all the pieces that have presented. I will just pull out a few of the highlights. One of the things to know is that the report in its entirety will be posted on the Pasadena ISD website under Required Postings for Accountability, along with multiple other required postings that we have throughout the year. Of the five pieces of the TAAPR report, which you have, and those different sections have been color-coded for you, we're going to start with just a general profile of our students. We have not seen much change in our demographics. We have 83% Hispanic, 8% African-American, 6% white, and 3% Asian. We continue to have a large economically disadvantaged percentage, which is about 20% more than the state overall. And a third of our students are LEP, educationally disadvantaged... I'm sorry, economically disadvantaged and English language learners are two factors that the states use when finding campuses to compare against each other. So, we're going to focus on those tonight a little more than usual. As part of this STAR data that's been presented throughout the course of the year, we've seen this data in this particular graph before, and in all the graphs tonight, the red will be the district, the light blue is the region, and the dark royal blue is the state. When we look at all students for reading, math, writing, science, and social studies, you'll note that the district is just slightly below in all those cases. But if you look at it just a little differently, and we take the state's TAAPR report and compare it against ours, you'll see what's on the next slide. And this is our economically disadvantaged students. And when you compare the state to Pasadena ISD, in this case, we outperform the region and we outperform the state when you're looking at kids in an apples-to-apples comparison. And that includes a 6% increase in social studies over the region and the state. One thing to note about economically disadvantaged, we have not seen a huge change in that over the past several years. But when data comes in at the end of this year for the fall, we expect a 5% increase minimum in the percent of kids who are economically disadvantaged, and that is a huge jump in a single year, and it may go as high as 9%. And the reason we believe that that is happening is still residual from Hurricane Harvey. Multiple reasons for that. One, we still have families that are recovering and still qualify as economically disadvantaged, and the way they qualify is to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch Applications. They also qualify if they are already in a state or federal program that feeds into our NutriKids system, and they automatically are free and reduced lunch. So, those numbers increased tremendously last year, and some of those are still in place. Also in the area, we had a lot of families that either lost employment or had a change of employment that changed their family income, that put them in a different level. We had a huge change in awareness, both for the families to realize what benefits were available to them through that program and the district and campuses as far as policies and procedures. So, with all that wrapped together, we really think that that is the contributing factor, and I will let you know as soon as we have official numbers for the state in August as to what our final economically disadvantaged percentage for this year will be.
Donna?
Yes.
Why do you think there was an increase in awareness? Did we do something differently than we haven't... that we have not done before?
We just had to do it en masse. There were so many that we had to develop a faster, more efficient procedure and process, and a lot more students and families are using the online application versus a paper application.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Another piece to the puzzle, again, was English language learners. And throughout the report, there's several different definitions. So, when we're talking about them out in public, we try to make a big effort to make sure we know which group we're talking about in a particular report and to note it on reports. So, if I ever don't do that, please question me on it. One way they talk about ELLs is current ELLs, and that means anybody that is currently defined as an English language learner. In other reports, you will see monitored ELLs, and that means students that are no longer identified as English language learners because they have met the requirements to exit, but they're still being monitored by the state for performance, and that goes up to four years after exit. And then there's another category called Ever ELL in high school. So, when they graduate, they look at graduation rates based on were you ever in ELL, even if you were not one when you were graduating. So, there's really three or four different ways that the state reports it, and we on our end just try to be careful to make sure we let everyone know which group we're talking about. Some things that are... Another thing to remember here, we get a lot of questions about the English language learners. We don't always see an increase in performance, and one of the reasons is by the design of the program because the students come in to the program, and then their goal or objective is to obtain the English language. And once they do, once they get to that line, they're no longer English language learners. So, they exit the escalator, and the next group comes on. So, you always have a continuing circular pattern of students obtaining the language, but they remove out the ones who have obtained the language and are succeeding at a higher level. So, that's one of the reasons you don't really see a lot of movement within that group. Things to remember when we're talking about our English language learner program, we have bilingual, which is Spanish for PK through 6, and dual language. And then we have English as a second language at all grade levels. What's highly important is the number of years students have been in school, in U.S. schools. So, a student who's in their first year in U.S. schools, that's a little different than a student who's been here six years. And then what we measure more for them is attainment and proficiency, and the state has a test for that called TellPass. It was recently rewritten, so this year it will be the first year where we have scores and standards all at once. So, we'll be sharing those with you when they come in this spring. The next slide that you see is another view, again, of our STAR data, and this time it is the current and monitored English language learners. And you'll see here that the district, again, exceeds performance of both the region and the state in all subject areas with 6% higher in science and 8% higher in social studies.
Wow.
Any questions on that section?
Very good.
Just some basic information. Our attendance, our five-year average, is at 95%, and this is always reported a year behind because attendance wraps up in the summer. Our graduation rate, our five-year average, is an 89.7, also reported a year behind because graduates can graduate all the way through the summer and still count. We definitely still have lots of opportunities to spark student interest and provide flexibility such as early college, connect, virtual school, and community school. Here's another comparison. We're looking at apples-to-apples and the same types of kiddos. If you look at our all students, which is the first set of three bars, our graduation rate is 89.9, which is above both the region and the state there. If you look at economically disadvantaged compared to each other, we're three points above the region and more points above the state than we had been. And then if you look at the ELL, district to region is huge, but still above the state as well. Another part of our annual report requires college-going information. This is showing us that, on the average, we have 59.6% of our graduates enrolling in college during their first year following high school. And this last year, a 58. We haven't been able to define the 57% and why there was a drop, but it's moving upwards, so we would hope to see another year of upward. As we saw last year, 70% of our kids are attending the San Jacinto College system with another 10% attending the University of Houston system. So, most of our kids are staying local, and that's why we keep in constant communication and collaboration with San Jacinto College. One of the final reports of the TAAPR is staff, and this one that we have here is just pulling out the years of experience with our beginning teachers, 6.5%. With our three-to-five years, 37%, six-to-10, 20%, 11-to-20 years' experience, 26%, and those with over 20 years' experience, we have 10%. One last thing I wanted to share with you before we wrap up today. There have been a lot of reports in the news, and we have a lot of research opportunities going on. We're actually working on an English language learner study with Rice University and an organization called HERC, so we'll be sharing some of that. But one of the hottest topics you've probably seen in news lately is the STAR and the Lexile measures, and how those Lexile measures are a little higher than we would anticipate. So, we compared ours using the same type of information that the ISDs had in that news report, and I wanted to share with you the results of that. If we look at just our 2018 Grade III English STAR reading, the students at percent meets, which is the second level of performance, and then we have students at percent masters, which is the highest level of performance they can achieve. Our original TDA data, we had 35% meets. If you look at the Lexile study and change to accommodate for that, it would have been 48% at meets. And for students at masters, what was 19% would have had an increase of 10% if we would have adjusted Lexiles as suggested in that recent article. So, that's just some of the research we have going on, and we will continue to share that information with everyone as we can. Any questions for me?
Great job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item number three, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Spark Park Contract at Hancock Elementary School for a Walking Track.
Move we approve the Spark Park Contract at Hancock Elementary School.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Lit or Dark Fiber Solutions for Transport to PISD Data Center, E-Rate CSP Number 19P-010DG to the company who met the specifications.
So, move.
Second. Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Criminal Justice Grant Resolution for the 2019-20 school year.
I move that we approve the Criminal Justice Grant Resolution.
Second. Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. I think this is wonderful. It's amazing, and most citizens of the country probably don't know this in Texas. But our wonderful legislature a few years ago decided we didn't need to keep up the truancy. So, there's no penalty for being truant from school. They hold us accountable for attendance. So, this is our effort to go out and make sure we reduce that problem, but it amazes me that the state doesn't recognize that attendance is based on truancy or non-truancy. So, but anyway, good job.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Consideration and Possible Approval for Thompson Intermediate to Travel to Keystone, Colorado to Attend the Keystone Science School, October 6 through 11, 2019.
I move that we approve the... For the Thompson Intermediate kiddos to travel to Keystone, Colorado to attend the Keystone Science School.
Second. Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Question. What is the cost now to do that?
I believe it's $1,200 per student. Is that correct? $1,200 per student.
And how much is raised by the student versus the school?
The cost will be all of the students raising it per the guidelines for the district, students, and parents, but there are scholarship opportunities if needed.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Consideration and Possible Approval for the Sam Rayburn High School Texan Battalion Army JROTC, Unarmed, and Color Guard Teams to Travel to Richmond, Virginia, March 29 through 31, 2019, to compete in the 2019 U.S. Army National Drill Championship.
29th through 31st, 2019, to compete in the 2019 U.S. Army National Drill Championships.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Kendrick, a second by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion?
Bring home first place again, please.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval for the South Houston High School Spanish Club and students to travel to Boston and New York, March 8th through 13th, 2020, to attend an educational campus tour of Harvard, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, Columbia, and Yale University.
Awesome. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I have a question. 2315 for each student. Do we have a very aggressive fundraiser in progress?
Yes, they're paying for it themselves, and they have Spanish club money to do so. And the students who are not in Spanish club are doing their own.
This is wonderful. It's a great opportunity. It's amazing.
So this is open to students outside of the Spanish club?
Yes.
It kind of threw me off for a second there. I called and visited, I think with Susan. I think she emailed you back and forth, but it caught me a little off-guard, the Spanish club going to Harvard, Yale, and Columbia until you explained what was going on. But, and I looked at it in a sense of maybe they were going to a school as far as going to visit the International Business Department and so on and so forth. And it made me think about, if you look on the list of schools, you'll find UT in the top 20.
Yeah.
And probably one of the best schools out there in the United States is UTSA for international business. Did we ever think about, or maybe in the future, going to one of those schools a little bit? Those are a little bit less...
We can mention that, but usually our elementary and middle schools go to our local colleges in Texas. So this is an event for the high school to be able to broaden their horizons and have a lot more life experiences with expectations for an Ivy League.
Yeah. I understand that Ivy League, that Ivy League school, I looked it up today, and I'm trying to figure out, put all this stuff together. And that Ivy League school, like Columbia is 75,000 a year plus.
Yep.
And a school like UT in Austin is 25,000 plus.
More affordable. So it's for people who have an opportunity to have free rides there, full scholarship. So that's the intent. But you're right, we want to stick in our home state and keep our good kids here. We understand that, too.
I want to keep them here, but I want them... And I want those kids to excel. But let's say we send 30 kids there, we could send 30 to UT. We may give one or maybe two to Columbia or...
I think this had to do with the invitation they sent us. It was a great opportunity to take advantage of it. It's not something that's normally on the radar.
And the college now coordinators are doing trips pretty regularly. In fact, today, I know Angie Stallings isn't sitting in the audience because she went with Pasadena Memorial to Texas State today and helped with a college tour there. So I know our high school kids are doing local tours as well as our middle school and intermediate and elementary kids even visiting A&amp;M and UT and all the other local...
Well, they're not going to A&amp;M, but UT.
Hey! Hey now!
Getting bad trouble doing that.
Alita, you agree with me?
I agree.
She is an ag parent, so she better not be agreeing.
But at the same time, that dream of going to MIT or Columbia is there. They can't keep dreaming either, you know?
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's possible. Well, remember our young man from Pasadena High who got the full ride to Harvard a number of years ago? This is the first time we've endeavored a trip of this magnitude in the district, isn't it?
Well, we have a young man at South Houston High School that brought this up in SSAC. And they can't dream about these possibilities if they've never seen them or know about them. So he encouraged, I'm sure, because he was encouraging us as a district to publicize the camps and the opportunities. I think someone up here has a grandson that's taken advantage of those camps, but to publicize those more because there are scholarship opportunities and there are lots of financial aid for students who want to attend some of these. So it's just, again, an opportunity for students who want to be exposed to colleges outside of Texas and of course of Ivy League status so that they can see, you know, what the opportunities are there.
And it is an experience they will never forget.
It is. You know, I know my grandson, the last three years has gone to MIT, and that's where he wants to go to school. You know, he's 13 years old and his mind is set. That's where he wants to go. So, you know, I think that it gives them that foresight and maybe the opportunity that they didn't know they had before. So I think it's a great, I think it's a great program, a great thing.
And it also brings forth a worth ethic that they can achieve that if they work at it.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section six, student achievements are on pages 141 to 143. They show the results of the Texas Academic Decathlon Regional Competition. So congratulations to South Houston High School, CTHS, Pasadena High School, J. Frank Doby High School, and Pasadena Memorial High School for their accomplishments.
And Pasadena Memorial and Doby will be moving on to state.
Section seven, policy update and review. We don't have any this evening. Section eight, financial section. Item number one, consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments for the month of January.
Move, we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration and possible approval of the dietetic internship between Oak Bend Medical Center and Pasadena ISD Child Nutrition Department.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I think it's a great opportunity.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section nine, Operation Section, consideration and possible approval of the final change order number one for the roof replacement package one project.
I move that we approve the final change order number one for the roof replacement project number one or project.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of a construction contract for the roof replacement package two project included in the 2017 bond program.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Kevin. Five schools, 90 days.
Figured to do them all simultaneously.
Oh, good.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the construction contract for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan.
Comment.
Yes, Fred.
This job is being based on what is called a best value contractor. We all understand that. We've seen that go both ways, and we've seen it change. And what I'd like to reiterate is that the people that did the grading on this have a lot of confidence in the contractor. And so the difference between the low bid and the next bid up is substantial. And so I would expect that that contractor to understand what that is. I don't know if the low bidder and the second bidder know the difference in pricing, but it's enough that when you start this project, know that you started it with the idea that the people that you're not only working for are here, but the people that had a lot of confidence in you. And I guess the graders were the architect and Kevin and Israel and whoever else. So I would appreciate if you remember that and tell your superintendent, whoever it is, basically what, how you got this job. It was on your reputation that you were going to do a better-than-average job, and so I expect to see that because we've seen this go both ways. And that's the only thing I have to say.
Yes, Ms. Sullivan.
I was wondering if in the recommendation that we could list the final contract amount of the $22,147,633 and the name of the contractor, who is Division One Construction.
And we can do that. We had gone to being consistent with our subject and our recommendations, so for some time, we've been telling Kevin to not put that in. There was a lawsuit in 2017 about vendor pricing, and we've had some recommendations from our outside counsel regarding that. But we can definitely add that to the recommendation in the future, is my understanding right, Jody? If we so choose. I think we'd still be okay with the Attorney General putting that there in the recommendation. We just have to be careful.
I understand, but I think if there were any issues, legal issues down the road, that if this were the motion as it had been presented should come up, we'd have a...
And it'll be in our minutes, and it'll be in our, of course, our website, our video as we're speaking. So it will be recorded. But if we want to go back to that, hope really drilled home when I became superintendent, that darn subject better match that darn recommendation. So we drilled that with Kevin, and he decided to follow suit with us. But if we want to go back and that's how y'all'd like to see it, we can.
What our legal counsel advises to do.
Jody, she spent some time on the phone with outside counsel today about this topic.
So there has been some changes to the public information law and what might potentially be considered proprietary. In the Boeing case, the Texas Supreme Court in 2017 interpreted and applied public information law to pricing of a contract after it was executed to the extent that the vendor argued that it should not have been disclosed because it was proprietary, based on the fact that the disclosure of the price alone would give a competitor an advantage in that they would know what their prices was and what they had to beat next time. The Texas Supreme Court upheld that and said that, okay, we buy that argument to the extent that pricing information provides an advantage to a competitor, that it may very well be subject to an exception under the Public Information Act and therefore not necessarily disclosable by an entity. Certainly, that conflicts with our obligation as a district to be transparent. The Texas Attorney General has applied that same rationale from the Attorney General's... or I'm sorry, from the Supreme Court's decision in their subsequent analysis of those cases. So as a district now, when we are getting public information requests for pricing information, I'm having to submit requests for an opinion to the Attorney General and provide notices to all of our vendors whose pricing implication may be disclosed and allow them the opportunity to contact the Attorney General and present their arguments with respect to that. To the extent our vendors are submitting those arguments, the Attorney General is telling or directing that we redact that information and not disclose it to the public in those responses. So...
I don't understand the problem in the first place. I didn't understand a thing you said a while ago, Nelda. So go over it again.
In the recommendation, I would like for us to name the contractor and the amount of the contract that we're approving.
For what reason?
For transparency.
Do we have to?
Well, you heard what Jody said. It's still up for grabs.
Yeah.
Pardon? All that information is in the background of the gentleman?
It is.
So I think it's just a preference we can, from what I understand, or we don't have to.
The understanding that I'm getting from outside counsel is that this point...
It's not likely we'd be okay either way.
Yeah, they're saying, you know, we just need to be consistent in what we're doing. And so as long as we're being consistent, then we're hoping that the legislature will kind of fix that loophole. We're expecting that they will. We know there's been some bills proposed to potentially clarify that issue because we don't think that that was necessarily the Supreme Court's intent or realized it would have that kind of implication. So we're hoping to get more guidance as we go through this legislative session and hopefully a definitive answer with respect to pricing. But outside counsel right now is saying be consistent in whatever we choose.
Well, and that was, it was my understanding... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It was my understanding that it had been presented this way for the past, as long as I can remember. I certainly think it's been this way.
It has.
Okay. So I don't have a problem with doing it this way as long as it's reflected, as you said in the minutes. And obviously, it's going to be reflected this way in the explanation.
Right. Fred?
I agree with you, but is the law that they're talking about, and you use the term vendor, are they talking about contractors? Because I heard you say earlier about the fact that they can compare each other. Well, these contractors use different subcontractors. They use different vendors. And so if you, in here, if you look in the book, in the minutes, you'll see what the total cost of what we're awarding.
So it would...
So it's public information. And so I think I'd be interested in you telling me that we cannot get the price for a general contractor's bid because it would be public information or a comparison back to the other contractor.
So that's...
Wait a minute, one second.
Sorry.
Let me finish. So in other words, you're not really looking, they're bidding the same project, Jody, okay? But they're using different subcontractors. They're going to have a choice of materials they're going to use as far as, let's say it's a Pangian or something. They may use Sherwin-Williams, Cooks, Pittsburgh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I wonder if that law pertains to contractors as it does vendors, when a vendor is actually submitting a price on a certain item.
So the Supreme Court's decision was interpreting whether or not any pricing information of a third party, whether it is a contractor or someone that we've, you know, a PO, any kind of third-party pricing information that's possessed by a governmental entity, whether or not that pricing information was subject to an exception to the Public Information Act, specifically 552.104.
I'd like to see the thing about the contractor, if you don't mind getting it for me.
Okay. I have no problem.
Okay, because that interests me because I guarantee that all these people, the day after the bid, everybody, every one of them contractors, correct me if I'm wrong, but every one of these contractors knows what the other bid was.
We have a contractor right now that's put in a public information request. She's having to notify everybody that bid the job.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot of work, just so we can stay above the law. But we'll get it for you.
Sure, sure. But normally, these contractors have an idea of what everybody else bids.
Right. And so the obligation is not that we can't disclose it, it's that prior to disclosure, I have to request the Attorney General issue an opinion and provide those contractors with the opportunity to submit their arguments to the Attorney General about whether or not it is so that they may make a determination and then give us direction about what we can and can't disclose.
Right.
Under the Public Information Act and its exceptions. But we'll get it for you.
Do you have a comment? I don't. Do you have a comment at all?
No.
Well, I do have a, you know, if it's one of the value, what's the correct term?
Best value contractor.
If it's a value contractor, then that adds a whole new layer of people knowing what somebody bid. Then you've got, then it gets more convoluted.
Actually, when we do a bid opening, we do... We publicize a bid opening, and we do it openly. We usually have, the room is full of all the contractors, so they hear what all the bids are. They're read out loud, all the alternate pricing, the base bid. So they're all hearing that and writing it down. So it's public information.
Sure.
So I think it's just a matter of preference. If we want to change what we're doing, we can change it. This is how we've been doing it. I think it's just a matter of preference. I think we're okay. It's just adding verbiage, and do y'all just want it for his section, or do you want to allow everybody that presents a...
There's something else.
Yeah, we're not asking to change it. I think she was just asking that it be listed. Of course, it is in the minutes.
Yeah.
So it's there.
Just leave it the way that it is.
Okay. And it'll be on the website? It'll be where it can be readily found? All of this information is on every board meeting that we have.
My comment is only on best value. I certainly don't understand why we would think about, if Jody's going to ask the Attorney General whether to do this or not, why we would get in the middle of that.
No, she would only ask if a...
No.
Okay.
I understand. I'm talking about for us to... I understand, but I'm talking about for us to start revealing the stuff that she can't. She's going to ask the Attorney General if it's okay.
I think we need to do it the way we've done it, and that's just, that's just my opinion. I think that it's not caused any problems that I know of recently.
Yeah, and I think we've done it in the past both ways. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, because Hope, some years ago, said, let's be consistent with, you know, that was recommendation that was given to her, be consistent with your subject and your recommendation. And Karen and I go over these books, and we call people, and we say, hey, you know, but Derek puts a lot of extra information in his recommendations, because there's rules and things that he has to follow regarding purchasing, for example. Not picking on you, Derek, but you have a lot of information that he has crossed his t's and dotted his i's. So we'll look at these, and we'll make sure we're as transparent as possible, and we, by no means are we trying to not...
No, no. I looked at another one that kind of made up my mind. It is in the educational section. It talks about consideration, possible approval of the lit or dark fiber solutions for transport to PISD data center, E-Rate, and it lists the CSP and then to the company who met specifications. So it didn't spell out anything additional. And so as far as I was concerned, this was kind of the same thing.
You can always call and ask.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to know, I was just making a comment on the best value contractor, and I think it's just something we've done for years, and just have to be careful.
I call a question.
Yes.
Ready to vote?
I need to ask another question.
Oh, you're ready.
That means we got to vote on the question?
You have a question?
Well, not since she asked for a question, no.
Okay, we're ready?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four. Consideration and possible approval of the material testing services agreement for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Except for like the asbestos and stuff? What does that cost?
They check all the materials that are going into the building.
Going into the new building?
Yes.
Or coming out of the old?
Concrete, no, going into the new building.
Okay, I got you.
Just to make sure they're in compliance with everything.
I got you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five. Consideration and possible approval of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing MEP commissioning services agreement for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Consideration and possible approval of the budget and design services agreement for the Sam Rayburn High School tennis court and site improvement project and funding by the 2014 bond contingency pool.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes.
Part of this includes demolition of a Smith and the old portables? We're not going to move the portable, we're going to destroy them?
Some of them are not worth moving. We are moving some, but there's the some that are just too old.
Thank you, Dan. I mean, Kevin.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. Consideration and possible approval of the rental of property for auxiliary transportation site CSP number 19P-014LP.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
How many cars or buses do we put on that property?
I have someone that might can answer that.
I have Mr. Stock here.
Yeah, he's here. How many do we put at that old rental property?
We actually put close to 200 buses.
Oh, wow.
It's, if we jam-pack them in, we can put close to 200. With both sides, if we are approving both sides, like currently, we just have one side of that property.
This is an additional two and a half acres.
The additional, we would be able to put close to 200 if we jam-pack them in, which will help us in the construction and transition into the new facility, so.
Is this property frontage on South Shaver?
No, this is on Lafferty. Yes, ma'am.
Additional property on Lafferty?
Yes, ma'am.
Adjoning, right?
Yes, yes.
Same owner?
Emmons, yes, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.